Okay, so we're gonna get started. Any changes to the agenda? The agenda as is. Open public for items not related to the agenda. So if you are joining us online, you could unmute or turn on your video if you have something unrelated to the agenda. Any announcements from anyone? We had quite a few.
I have two things. Um, so first of all, I had the first ever snapping turtle in my yard. But the reason I bring that up here is because I'm quite sure it is tied to the construction going across the street. But also, secondly, I have to believe it has something to do with the maintenance that UVM is has conducted on their stream.
Blue River.
Which I don't understand why it was completely diminished and grazed over and is being rebuilt to make it flow better. But I was so shocked to see that stream bulldozed. They are working to make the water flow, and I know that the water of that stream has been impacted by the construction next door. And so there is just a lot of unfortunate missed missteps, I think, happening over there regarding those natural habitats. And I believe the snapping turtles in my yard because its habitat has been decimated. And I hope that that's a temporary thing, that in time it will find safety again. But, you know, just wanted to bring that up. And the second thing is, I'm just trying to get my head around the big picture, what we're going to be spending so much time on the next few years. And I've started talking to employees within South Burlington when I see them about their experience. I spoke to a letter carrier on a Sunday who was exhausted and discussed the fact that she had to work on Sundays now because Amazon basically forced the United Post Office to add those hours or else. And she was absolutely exhausted and she works, she lives in Richmond. So she's daily driving that distance back and forth to get here because she can't afford to live anywhere, anywhere nearby. And she's exhausted. So I wonder how long she'll continue in that. I also spoke to the, she seemed like a manager. She was a well experienced person at the Dollar Store and was just having a chat with her. She drives an hour and a half to work every day. She spends $30 a day on gas to go to her supervisory position at the Dollar Store. And we had a comment about, she had a comment about how Burlington needs to, you know, stop letting people live for free in hotels because they are not going to work. And then my response was, well, where are they going to live when they can't live in the hotel anymore? They're still not going to be able to work for you because they're going to have to move too far away. So I am doing a lot of outreach that way. And I would ask all of you to do the same, just to get to know who, who you deal with on a regular basis that might be out of your norm, out of your friend groups. So that as we're getting in to our planning, we're just mindful of the realities that a lot of people are dealing with. So I thought that was helpful.
Quick question. You know.
Okay, I was going in the order that people had their hand up, which was Ted and then Michael and then Sarah. Sarah, was it related to Monica's?
Yeah, it was. But I don't need to preempt the, the commission. Go ahead. Well, I just quickly wanted to ask if she would elucidate where that UVM stream bed is. I'm not aware of that project.
It's right at Swift and Spear. So they were doing a lot of reclaiming and cleaning up of their ag land, both at Wheelock and at that area across the street. There's a new person, he's actually fantastic at UVM, and I'm just, his name is escaping me. But he has a lot of natural resource expertise and is doing some very good things, like working to, working plans to stop using certain chemicals and very good ideas. But, yes.
So are you, are you speaking of the Spear Meadows development and the stream that runs diagonally across that field that they've been?
That field is UVM. Yeah, that's the UVM land. Yeah. And that field, that, that, that stream, yes.
Yes, okay. I have been watching that with horror. It, it keeps reclaiming itself too. I hope people have noticed. Very wet there, even though there's dirt higher than it used to be.
Well, and apparently that some of that was caused by the construction. And I think UVM had reached out and tried to work it out with the construction. But the people that were working on that didn't seem to give them the time of day to work on. Usually beneficial, you know, so there was a lot of unfortunate missteps there that I don't know what we can do about it. But I think that's so, so UVM is kind of working in a reactionary mode. But then the snapping turtle's in my yard laying its eggs because.
Yep, yep. Thank you for that information.
Just that my question is, we've had one or two people come before us. And I've talked with a person or two with regard to when we were considering taking up some of the changes that we had made. In other words, there appear to be some people that have fallen between the cracks and Mr. Bright and another fellow off towards the street. So I mean, is this sort of a year out, is it within three? I know we have so much on our plate, but it seems like some of these things probably should be sooner than later to try to, you know, take care of people's concerns.
We do have the list and as we have, as we're able to, we're slotting them in. As I indicated at the last meeting, though, just to be completely frank, we are sucking wind in our department.
Yeah.
We don't, our city planners on maternity leave and our zoning administrator is out. So our ability from our end to do things beyond the sort of like must dos of at the moment are a little bit thin. But we are working to slot those things in as we can this summer, this fall.
Well, one of the announcements, I should save it for our task force discussion. But I was reading an article today that in New England, 60% of our electricity is generated from natural gas and 27 from nuclear nationally, about 38 national gas from that gas. And I guess, you know, as we look at this broad picture, we're trying to make some fast changes, but we're still very dependent on, you know, in order to try to retrofit, it's going to be a long time in hell before we're able to retrofit.
Well, but anyway, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that when we get to the climate action. But our, I think my understanding is that at least Green Mountain Power is slated to be carbon free, which doesn't mean not nuclear, it doesn't mean other things, but carbon free in the next couple, three years, right? Hasn't that been what we've been reporting to?
Slated to, I think they are carbon free now and they're slated to be 100% renewable in a few years. And they're carbon free because they supplement their carbon sources with credits. So they, they buy enough, you know, Chris got to say they're carbon free.
But from a global perspective, you're, you're absolutely right.
Yes, Ethan Goldman and I attended the steering committee meeting last week. Ethan presented to the steering committee mainly to the school board what the Climate Action Task Force was doing and how it works. And I helped out with a few comments. I made a rather, a rather emotional appeal for the board, the school board to consider a curriculum about climate change to, to educate the very fearful, terrified, in fact, students about what's coming and how to, how they can handle it. Because I think the kids today, as I said to them, they're afraid and they're not quite sure how they're going to deal with it. So a curriculum that educates them about what is coming, what to expect, how to deal with it, what sacrifices they might have to make. I made that appeal and I think it fell on fertile ground, put it that way. For the rest, we talked to the school board about weatherization of existing school buildings and the reduction of vehicle miles traveled by encouraging students not to drive their private cars to school. And the idea was well received, although one of the participants said, we can't force anybody to do anything. And I said, we're not forcing, we're encouraging and making it easier. And that was really the gist of it, but I think it was a worthwhile effort to, to tell the school board what the Climate Action Task Force is doing. And we outlined some of the, some of the high impact actions that are recommended.
Great. Any other announcements?
A couple of quick ones. One, I was also at the steering committee, which is the school board and city council there to participate in a discussion about impact fees associated with the projected capital expenditures that the schools are beginning to anticipate or have previously anticipated and obviously went before the voters a year or two ago and are being reassessed now. But it was a very interesting discussion. Impact fees can be used for capital projects so long as it is to increase capacity. So as we see more students come in, then that can take place. John Slayson of RSG gave a presentation based on the rough numbers that have been provided by the school of capital costs and showed what the maximum that could be charged theoretically, based on you take the total cost of improving a school and you say, how much more capacity does it take, does it, does it provide? So if it holds 1,000 students today and you have a school that holds 1,200 students, then one sixth of the cost could be borne, no more than one sixth of the cost in that scenario could be borne by new housing, new students. And it was some pretty high numbers as to, not surprisingly, schools are expensive. I'm sure that many people are not surprised by that. But it was the beginning of a dialogue about considering how to, how to put the financial piece together. And also the council and steering committee had some discussion about where do they, how does this school board move forward with assessing and determining what its needs are, bringing them to the voters? So.
I'll follow up on that. Question that, so going back to that, that number of student increase, if, for example, fifth graders moved to the middle school, would that count as a, an increase in the building and therefore get support from the impact fees? Is it, or is it citywide?
It would be looked at, I guess it depends on how it gets packaged together as to whether it's about one school or about multiple schools. But ultimately, it's about total capacity within what you're looking to do. So if it was a rearrangement of, let's say, this is not based in fact, but let's say the elementary schools had too many kids and the middle school had too few, if they were to do renovations to adjust for that, that's not necessarily increasing total capacity. That's just rearranging.
Yeah.
If one were to be improved to have more capacity total of students, then I think, then that would be eligible.
Would that increase that Monica was asking about cover the cost of those mobile classrooms that they think they will need in order to accommodate?
So that was one of the questions that was posed. And John Slayson, the consultant, said that capital projects with a life of at least five years are eligible. So conceivably, yes. If the intent were, you know, the, the, either there is a plan or a plan is being worked on for 10 years from now, but that a solution is needed for the next five years or six years or eight years, then yes, that could conceivably be eligible. The other quick update that I have is that we are continuing to ramp up work related to the comprehensive plan. Last week, our city manager hosted a, we have a every couple of months get together of the department heads and then the essentially division leaders within each of the departments, so maybe 20-ish people. And we did an introduction to the comprehensive plan, talking about what their roles would be in looking at this. It was a really interesting dialogue to think about who do we in the planning and zoning department typically interact with in a given day in our population is quite a bit different from who the library interacts with, which is very different from who the fire department or the police department interact with. And there was some really neat discussion about how we can share our experiences, sort of to Monica's point of who do we all know in the community? How do we reach out to the community? And then, of course, from their end, what, what feedback do they have in terms of providing their services? And what do they need to know that's coming out so that they can be planning for their services for the coming five to 10 to 20 years? On whether we're talking about population change, demographic change, development, redevelopment, compact areas, climate change, city goals. So it was really productive and very exciting. And I think they were really pleased to be engaged early on. And I think we're going to be having more dialogue with them, certainly at the staff level. And as we go forward into this fall, we may talk about having some of them come and talk with you all directly. If that's something that you're interested in, to really hear their experiences, their needs. So think about that a little bit.
Yeah, that is great.
Can I offer one more? I forgot to say this, the city council has a new structure and Paul, you can maybe help me with this. But they're the, and you may know too, but each of the city council members are now a liaison on a committee. And they've designated a new segment to all of their meetings where they give a summary of what they're hearing from their committees and what they've witnessed in the conversations. I found it to be so helpful. I, I gave kudos to Jesse Baker for making that happen. And it'd be great if it happened more at the beginning of the meeting, so a lot of people could watch it. But I'm going to try to post out the video and the timestamp so people can jump to it. But I highly recommend that folks here try to watch that city council roundtable on the summaries from the committees. It was very, very helpful.
Well, thanks for sharing that, Monica. And yes, that's the council in there, they, they put out a sort of a charge broadly for all committees. And included in that was the commitment from them themselves to have a liaison to all the policymaking. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to attend every meeting, but they will be the one to be in touch with and to give the opportunity for the chair to communicate with, have better feedback throughout the year. For the planning commission, the council decided that it will always be the, the city council chair. So we're, the other committees, it's sort of select as the areas of interest, knowledge, experience are. But given the role of the planning commission, the council felt that it would, should be just designated the chair period, so.
Which was already kind of the case, so no change for us.
You good with that, Doug?
Hey, so are we ready to move on? Okay, so next up, we have a presentation and discussion of the draft Climate Action Plan Task Force targets and actions. So we're going to hear from Andrew and Michael.
You know, and as you guys are going to start, when the last meeting, is there another presentation that's coming, having to do with? Building, but is that this one or no? Okay, okay. I just was trying to get cut up since I wasn't here in the last meeting.
So thanks, Jessica. So yeah, I'll, I think I'll lead this, but Michael is also on the task force. So I invite Michael to add when and as appropriate. And I don't know if there's anyone else online that's a member of the task force. I think I saw Donna perhaps at one point, but if there is similar invitation.
Donna Leaven is on, yes.
Yeah. So maybe just can flip to the next page, Paul. Just a bit of history here before we, we get into it to review the commitments that South Burlington has made in this area. Started in 14 with an energy efficiency commitment. I'm not aware that that's been measured, but I think it's been sort of useful over time from the energy committee's perspective. In 17, the council agreed to commit South Burlington to meet or exceed the US obligations on the Paris Climate Agreement. There wasn't much action as a result of that resolution or much monitoring frankly of that commitment. And therefore, the past summer, the council took a further step and agreed to form a climate action task force, which would have the charge to basically affect the August 17 resolution. So can go to the next page. So there was a seven member task force, task force, Ethan Goldman is the chair on the vice chair. We've been hard at work and at this point we have kind of a draft plan. And I have to give a lot of credit to Paul and a lot of credit to the hardworking folks at CCRPC. Have just done really an amazing job pulling all this together and, and really assembling from a bunch of chaotic thoughts, something that looks like a plan. So what, what we first did, and as you say, we, you know, mostly CCRPC honestly, is built an inventory to baseline their best estimate of where we are now using a 2019 inventory with a little bit of roll forward. Then, working with a group called ICLI, and ICLI is kind of a, it's been around for a long time. I actually worked with ICLI a couple of decades ago in New Jersey on similar things. ICLI does this for towns, knows how to do climate plans. ICLI basically helped them figure out where South Burlington would be if we continued on our present course. And then ICLI helped figure out of the various levers that we have, how we can push and pull those levers to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to meet our targets. You'll, you'll see on the next page how they did that. Just a note about our natural areas, I have some data around that and ICLI helped. We do kind of model, they modeled the carbon sequestration potential of our forests. It's not really factored in the plan, but I think it's useful and helpful to, to be aware of that, of that data. Before I flip, I will say I was a little, I, I know how hard this is going to be, but seeing the numbers and I'll show it in a second, it's, it's daunting, the scale is immense. And, you know, unless we pull out all the stops, it's hard to see how we'll satisfy these targets, honestly. So if we flip to the next page. Um, so the, the top two rows are inputs into the model. ICLI working with CCRP model that we'd have to reduce our emissions by 60% at this point to hit the Paris Climate Accord targets, given where we are. And, you know, those targets are back from 2005. They baseline as I, as I mentioned, that right now we're at 195 million tons of CO2 equivalent. So that's CO2, tons of carbon equivalent, tons of methane and other, you know, kind of greenhouse gases. That if we did nothing, we'd actually stay pretty constant, which is interesting. And my understanding of why that's the case is it models in other things that are going on in the state and federally that we'd be bound to and just kind of naturally fall into if, if we did nothing else special in the town, like cafe standards and electric vehicles and, you know, the stretch, residential stretch energy code and things that are happening in any event, regardless of what we do, that we basically flat, but that to meet the 60% goal, the target reduction goal, we have to go down to, as it says here, about 77 million tons. Think with, with Paul's help and Paul, you can speak to us. ICLI model that our population will grow about, you know, 1.3%, employment 1%, etc. You can see there VMT stands for vehicle miles traveled if we do nothing, 1.3% growth annually.
Right. And those are, those are numbers that we and the CCRPC worked with to give them a reasonable best estimate of what's going to happen for population. That's been our growth rate for a long time. And the vehicle miles traveled is basically, as you said, if nothing is done, that's the regional planning commission's model as to what can be expected annually is about a 1% growth in vehicle use. And just one quick thing of what you were saying. Importantly, it says 2030 on here, the Paris Accord is to 2050, but ICLI in working with municipalities has really felt 2050 feels so far off. It's hard to focus people's attention to say, oh, we know, we can solve that in 2042 if it's a 2050. So they've created this, they've helped municipalities look at an interim of 2030 as to what's the target for that date in order to help it, really not sort of feel like the next generation's problem.
Yep, yep. So let me just pause this. So right now, these inputs, I think all these inputs and everything I said today, right? You know, up till now is kind of fixed and established. So let me just pause and see if anyone has questions about that.
Yeah. I guess my question, is this, is the bottom chart annualized of the numbers per year?
No, the bottom chart is through 2030. Well, you mean, oh, oh, the emissions, emissions are annual emissions, yes.
Well, like there's three columns of numbers in the bottom.
So let, let me describe the, the bottom, yeah, let me describe the bottom column. Okay, so the bottom column is, is estimates of how much we need to reduce emissions in the various sectors. And I will say this is still draft and these, you know, these, there are levers here. You can, you can push and pull depending upon what, you know, trying to hit these targets produces in terms of what we'd actually have to do, right? And how realistic those things are. So what this is telling you, telling us that in 2019, which is the base year, each of the sectors listed, so natural gas used by commercial installations generated, you know, 30 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And, you know, commercial electric, so on, so on, which adds up to, you know, the total, right? 195, 532 matches up to the base year 2019 up at the top. Right? So this is how you, this is how the 195 is derived by adding up the, the CO2 emissions from each, from each sector, you know, categorized as shown. And then.
So the 195 relates to the 188?
So the 195 matches up to the 195 in the top row, in the top there. The 187 is also factoring in the CO2 emissions and CO2 sequestration from natural areas. And we're not using that as part of our plan. It's kind of illustrative that we can see the impact of more or less development.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so then the second column is, is where the carbon emissions of each of those sectors is projected to be in a BAU scenario. And then the third is kind of ICLI's science-based target. If we want to hit the 77, and here they actually hit 76, so they've, you know, done a little better. Where, when you kind of push and pull and see what, how this all shakes out, where, you know, the current recommendation is to reduce greenhouse gases.
What, what do, understand the first part again, another thousand, it says 1,000 CO2. What is that based on?
So honestly, we didn't really get into this Ted with, with ICLI. But they estimate how much, you know, development there would be, you know, BAU, how much is going to be. And, you know, if you, how much say forest is going to turn into parking lot or, you know, etc. And, and by reason of that. you know, etc. And and by reason of that, um, how many uh, you know, uh, tons of carbon are not going to be sequestered that would have been.
And if you planted X amount of trees, that would reverse that.
Yes, theoretically, yes.
In time.
Yeah, and you know, it it could be conversion to development. It could be you know, uh, uh, removal of invasive species. In theory, it could be forestry in another town. We don't have a lot of forestry here, but it's general activity of removal of things that currently sequester, which you're right. It could also be uh tree planting, and I believe that's one of the recommendations. On a, on a very big picture scale, the the thousand, e- every metric ton counts, but on a two hundred thousand scale, a thousand, you know, plus or minus a couple of hundred isn't, is I think where you're gonna get next is there's a couple of key sectors where this is really the big.
Absolutely. I mean, I I I agree with that.
It's a million, not a thousand.
And honestly, I mean, there's, there's honestly uh some um estimation here. And so eh all these variables are estimated, right? So um the the thousand is almost around the era in in the estimations.
It it it's a change in land use away from the natural environment that they're assuming that it's going to be changed to something else.
Also importantly, Ickley did not model um change of land use of of wetlands or meadows. They only modeled forests, which would um if disturbed, also have a carbon, you know, negative carbon uh footprint, but they did, that's not in their model.
I'm just gonna have a question. So um, so the input was, you know, you had your base here and you you were targeting that sixty percent reduction. You factored in more people, more vehicles and then using the model. They used the model so that you didn't just take sixty percent of all those numbers. It it actually did a factor in like which ones were more realistic to.
So if we if we flip to the next, if we flip to the next page, it'll 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 help, it'll help, yeah. So why don't we do that? So um the next page shows roughly.
I'm sorry, before you go, the, when you have the employment and the population numbers, did they assume a consistent, you know, miles driven to get to employment? They just kind of left that flat. They didn't get into any of that. Like they're gonna assume that whatever, whatever the miles traveled per employee is today, that will remain constant.
So that's the, in the business as usual model, yes.
Okay.
Because it is projecting if we don't change patterns of how we have been, what can we reasonably anticipate?
Okay.
The next slide is about how do you, how do you foster change?
Okay, so that's got, thank you.
Yep.
And I think we'll, we'll see these in the summary, which is the high impact actions. It's been summarized, so we should just let Andrew go through it and answer the questions.
One quick question, Paul, just the one percent annually employment, one percent annually population, those were historical averages.
Yeah, um, one point three is about where we've been for the last twenty years or so. Um, before that, we were a little bit higher in number, but you know, one point three of a twenty thousand population is the same number of people as one point six percent of a ten thousand population. So I I felt pretty comfortable with that estimate in there, uh, that that is our historical and as we'll be talking about later tonight. Population growth is not something that sort of dramatically shifts quickly unless something external is really massive, you know, if a major employer were to like UVM Medical Center were to just pick up and leave. But other than that, big demographic arcs like population are not something that typically spikes up or down too much. So we felt pretty good about that as a estimate.
Is that estimate the average from nineteen eighty to not to two thousand and nineteen?
It's a little bit higher from nineteen eighty, um, but again, uh percentages are a deceptive number because one percent of ten thousand people is different from one percent of two thou- of twenty thousand people. So I feel pretty good about it uh as to, as to what it represents.
I'll get back to that question later.
Okay, so if we flip to the next page, um, just high level, the the way this page was developed and the prior page was kind of iterate around what, what, you know, what are our levers and what do we think we can do and then feed that back to the targets for the sectors and then come back to this and, you know, so this kind of represents now. Um, you know, they're all daunting, but they seem like, you know, none, none of these targets is more daunting than 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 any other. They're all gonna be really hard to meet, but they all seem kind of equally hard. And you can play, you can play with these. And if you play with these targets, that'll then feedback to the, to the prior page and and you know, we can do that, but my kind of takeaway, big picture is that there's so much to do that, you know, playing additionally with these levers is not gonna add that much more clarity about what we need to do, you know, it's just kind of be tinkering around the edges um instead of tackling the big problems. So what this is showing that to meet the emission reduction targets in the prior page, we'd have to retrofit and electrify five hundred homes a year. We'd have to weatherize six hundred homes a year. Um, eight percent of this by square footage of all commercial buildings would have to be electrified a year. Um, and you know, you can see electric vehicles, they have to have thirty-seven percent, thirty-seven percent EVs and thirty-seven percent plug-in EVs by two thousand thirty vehicles on the road. Reduce our vehicle miles traveled by two to three percent a year and um really um focus on very dense development, presumably in the city core um to reduce um V M T. Um, that that's really V M T thing. So eh eh the eh again, each and and this assumes that all new building will be net zero. Um, and to the extent you have a new building that are going up today that are not net zero, um, then all these things become even more daunting, right? Just kind of digging the hole uh deeper and deeper. So that's what we're up against and like for me, this was eye popping, the scale and enormity of what we have to do just to be on track for the Paris Climate Accords.
The, the, the twenty-seven seventy you new units in the high density, high density does in fact uh in provide or produce a more energy efficiency per unit.
That's true too, but I I I think this is V M T.
Now, the lot of the bottom.
I think, I think the minus five is about V M T, Paul.
Well, then we have more opportunity there because I know that and Donna.
Well, again, but they're assuming, um, Michael, it's not, it's not about that because they're assuming that all new development is in that zero, whether it's compact or sprawl, they're assuming it's net zero. So that that's not what that minus five million tons it's about. It's just about V M T. All right. So any quote.
Before you get into these specifics, um, you know, on the previous page, you said, reduce the reduction target was sixty point two percent up there in those um like goal, the I guess the inputs to the model.
Yeah.
But on the previous page, it talked about how the climate pledge was to reduce greenhouse gases by twenty-six to twenty-eight percent. And I know the year, the probably something to do with the years.
It has to do with the years. It also has to do with the updated science. It has to do with what's in the Global Warming Solutions Act. And it also has, it's it's also a complicated metric that Ickley uses to factor in each town's fair share and um honestly, um to this point, we've taken that as a given from Ickley, that that's what we need to do to meet all those targets. Um, I, I, I don't disagree with you. It would be good to be able to explain that particular number a little better, but right now that's the, that's what we're given by Ickley and CCRP to meet our targets.
Everything Andrew said is accurate. The one other thing I'd add to it is also in the various other ones, the start year is different. And so if the start year was twenty fifteen, then it might be X percent from that, but if the start year is uh is the, the base year is now twenty nineteen and the start year for action is twenty twenty-three. So the, 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 the windows get shorter, so the percentages go up. It's, but yeah, we're, we're gonna need the elevator speech on that.
You know, I know that that's a two thousand five start date and now, you know, we've done a lot of damage between two thousand five and now, so.
Yeah, that's true too, but I guess what Paul was saying is if we'd actually been able to implement these actions as of two thousand nineteen, you might not need sixty percent from nineteen to thirty, even we're baselining at nineteen, but we're not gonna be starting to say two thousand twenty-three. You kind of lost four years from the baseline already.
Yeah, we only have seven years in which Yeah.
So I um that's what you have to do, that's what has to be done in order to get to the goal that we want to do. And in reading this, maybe I read it too quickly. I don't think I saw how one would have five hundred houses retrofitted. Is there, is there some dollar attached here instead? It's, it's not, I can't believe it would be incentives. I mean, it'd have to be greater than that to.
So the, the, the task force is not, you know, I mean, we've, we've kind of talked about those issues, problems or the implementation details, let me call them, um, but certainly very, very, very important details. You know, where we are right now is, is, is laying out what, what I'm showing you.
Right.
And honestly, it's gonna be, if we're serious about this, you know, a, a full-on effort by many more people than the seven members of the task force. Um, everyone around this table and all the other committees and the residents and the businesses to figure out how we're gonna do this.
Yeah, right. And the task force has um with with others' input um, come up with a, a pretty substantial list of ways in which these can be implemented, some of them regulatory, some of the investments, some of them the city is a champion and a partner to um groups like Efficiency Vermont, and then some of them where the city is uh a, uses its lobbying power to, let's say, the state legislature and it's uh, it's likely to meet these targets. It's all of those and more.
You know, it's exactly right. We've laid out and we've thought hard about what are the things that we can do. Um, there's no way to kind of connect a dot to say, and if you do all these things, you'll hit this. It's just like these are the things we, we, we think we can do and let's, let's all get on with the doing, you know?
Were there any trade-offs?
Oh, Monica, yeah.
So um, I'm wondering how many um homes in South Burlington in the past year, couple of years have gone through the Efficiency Vermont Energy Audits.
Oh, and yours, Ickley told us, I think, about a hundred new heat pumps annually or so. Um, is what I recall him saying, but each home can use like three or four, so they estimated, I think, like twenty-five, thirty homes, you know, where.
Well, that's going to the, the heat pump, but even like we in um.
You talk about the weatherization.
Yeah. Yes. Well, and just, well, the energy, it, there's, so Efficiency Vermont would offer full energy audits. And when they do the audit, it's extremely thorough and um they'd probably recommend heat pumps now and we did it, that wasn't really a thing yet, but or happening. But then they also give incentives. So like if they say, gee, if you did this and then you get incentives back. So you almost can just do it. You have to put some money in, but you're getting.
You have to put a lot of money.
Lot of money still, Monica. I mean, I, I know what you mean, but I've had an audit, I know people've had and maybe you get a twenty percent break, but you're still.
I mean, I wanted to do it, but I'll never get paid back. I'm sure of that. It's, it can be really expensive.
Well, so I mean, right, but they, but they are happening and I wonder to what degree.
Stats on that.
I don't think so other. There was, there was some discussion of the programs for both audits and especially for, for uh lower income folks of helping to do the improvements are very popular and uh a, a subject area of another challenge is that they are popular enough that there is a labor shortage to do the work.
Right.
So even, so you know, that there's a interesting balance going on right now about the extent to which the program is promoted because there's only so much capacity that they have to do the thing. So it's, you know, the, the layers of the onion of this are are like many important subjects.
Well, but also the, the payout though, because we did do this on a fifteen hundred square foot ranch home. And the, while there may have been cost at that point in time, it has paid for itself over the um, ten years of
You were lucky.
I know, I mean, but they, but they did convince. So my point is, and um the other thing I just wanted to mention, um uh Norway, you guys know what Norway did? There um in April, their EV market share was at eighty-four percent. Um, they have incredible incentives, like you can get, there's a lot of taxes like toll booths. And if you had an EV, you don't pay a toll. If you, there's so many incentives that, so I'm looking at this number like I think this thirty-seven is gonna be dramatically increased. Um, but the cars are very expensive here right now when we don't have the incentives and I don't know what South Burlington can do about that. Um, it's, it really is more like a, a federal issue, but.
Also optimistic about the EV adoption. You see all the new cars coming tomorrow and the EVs are amazing cars, so that's um.
It's just, again, the availability.
And the key question in South Burlington is what can South Burlington do to affect these things? So it's, you know, uh, having EV chargers at City Hall, making it easy for uh homeowners associations and others to get them installed, connecting folks together, creating park and rides.
Maybe that leads into the next set of slides.
Perfect.
Okay, I know this is hard to read because I just kind of copied um a PDF that CCRP put together and let me just say this is like complete draft. This is just you know, their ideas of how this might come out, but we haven't spent a lot of time on these slides, so I'm giving you a real preview here. Um, but um, well, ma- ma- maybe just, we can just flip to transportation just because Paul was just talking about that and we can come back. So, you know, as Paul was saying, what can we do as a town? You know, we can, we can have policies and incentivize EV charging. You know, work with commercial owners to, to incentivize, you know, electric vehicle um equipment. Um, work with uh Drive Electric Vermont, which helps um folks and and dealerships sell EVs and buy EVs. So, you know, these are, these are various things that um the task force thought that the town could do um, to promote this, acknowledging that we don't have that many levers, right? We can't provide a five thousand dollar credit for EV. And you know, as of now, I don't think we can, I don't think we can kind of, you know, well, we, we don't have that many levers. So uh and again, it's a little hard to read, but these are the levers that we thought um are things that would make sense for the town to um consider with respect to transportation. Um, and the, these are kind of pulled from a larger set of actions. I attached a spreadsheet also. I don't know, Paul, if you said that, sent that around, but the, the, there's a much larger spreadsheet which has a, a fuller set of actions um for, for each of the sectors. Yeah. Oh, hi Donna.
Hi, I just wanted to point out um something that is on this slide and, and the spreadsheet we were looking at before. And that is that the higher density mixed-use development is, is actually a reduction in transportation use. Um, you know, the high efficient, the net zero construction that uh is, is not what this pertains to. Um, the higher density means that more people would be able to live closer to where they work presumably. Um, and so the reduction in transportation costs are, are taken into account with the mixed-use development. And also that the twelve point five units per acre, as you know, is not really high-rise development. That's you know, that, that can be two and three, two and three level, um, just, just higher density. Um, and it's kind of what I wanted to point out. I think if anything, the reduced vehicle miles traveled by two point five percent annually is, I, I think we could do a lot better than that. And I think we're probably doing that already, just with the higher price of gasoline. You know, I'd be surprised if we weren't already reducing that number of, of vehicle miles traveled.
I have a question. I was gonna ask if our zoning regulations or city ordinance, since we have so many auto sales here, can they control what percent have to be EV?
I don't. I, I don't think that that is an authority that's been granted to the municipal level in Vermont as a Dillon's rural state. I think that we would only have the authority. I think that we would only have the authority granted to us from the state, if the state has authority on it, but it's an interesting question.
I mean, we control what percent of cars sold in Vermont, and if we had a way of incentivizing or requiring, I mean, this is what Norway did. And they just did it, and then all of a sudden it happened, and if you make it easy for people and cost efficient for people, um. It's, it's not, you know, the people can only do what they can do with the cars they can afford. Um, but if the dealers are forced or incentivized. We, South Burlington could make a huge impact on all of Vermont.
When with the ratio in Norway is of cars to people, I mean, it's a culture of. Public transportation, many of those Nordic countries and.
Mountain cabins too, they all have their mountain cabins.
They have a huge sovereign wealth fund which can be used to pay for incentives which we don't have.
No, ironically, they use their fossil fuel money to.
Do you know what percentage of homes are being built currently uh at net zero?
Where?
Here.
At net zero, I I'm not sure that there are.
Zero?
There there are many that are much more high efficiency than previously, but I don't know that unless somebody is choosing to. You know, maybe some individual homeowners are doing that, but.
But we we're gonna get there in a moment too.
Okay.
So let me flip back to.
Can the DRB do anything about that?
I mean, we, I think we can, actually, let me flip back to buildings and thermal. In in buildings and thermal, I think there's actually more that the city could potentially do directly. Um, so Burlington has a rental code, and in that rental code, they mandate. Weatherization, we don't presently have a rental code, but I think we have the authority to adopt one. And we could mimic Burlington and that would go, I think, a long way, so that that is something we 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 could theoretically do as a city and.
Did you say Burlington's does?
What's that?
It requires whether whetherization.
Yeah.
After each.
And it, you know, over time has to improve, so.
That's a great idea because a lot of the rental homes.
Yeah, they have no incentive, right? They they just pass it on the rent, there's really no incentive to make those buildings efficient.
And they would still pass it on the run, the reality is, but at least then they would do it.
Right, it could be a win-win. The other thing that Burlington has done, and this goes to your earlier question, Monica. Is passed about a year ago now, an ordinance that all new construction. Residential and commercial pretty much has to be net zero, they didn't style it that way. But they styled it as a requirement that eighty-five percent of the building's heating load. Needs to come from renewable energy sources, and so you could then have some backup fossil fuel source for the remaining fifteen percent. I think the hope being that with today's technology, maybe you wouldn't, and that. From my perspective, once you're kind of not bringing in fossil fuels for heating, you're probably less incented to bring in fossil fuels for. For other stuff, and so I think it goes kind of a long way, not completely, but a long way toward achieving um. A net zero environment for new construction, we, and I'll I'll get into this a little bit, but that that goes to the. The other presentation that that you were mentioning, and then let me just park it right there, because I do have a page on that as well, so we'll 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 come to that. Um, you know, we're also recommending that um the town um begin to inspect particularly single-family homes. We have adopted the residential stretch energy code, and there's no way of knowing. Um, whether developers are complying with that code or how efficient the the buildings really are, because. We don't, we don't do any inspection, and it may well be everything's fine and perfect, but it may be that, maybe they're not. So that's a, that's another thing that um probably makes sense if we have the resource and time and energy to 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 do.
I would, I would offer to that in in uh or like in lieu of an inspection. Again, using incentives that if the home builder can then post-build. Demonstrate that they've done X, Y, and Z, they get money back, you know, it's like.
Under the residential stretch energy code, it's very required.
But if, no, I'm saying if we go further though.
Well, I, what I was talking about was just kind of inspecting the current requirements.
I see.
I mean, in the Burlington ordinance, um inspectors will uh verify that the uh. The builder has um built a building that complies with. The the original plan has of of energy efficiency for that building, if I can put it that way, but they have. They have the resources to inspect and audit, which we don't have. Um, and they are aided a lot by Burlington Electric. Who have the expertise.
How long has Burlington had that policy?
The the urn is a law, it's been, it's been a year or so, I think it was last September or.
September last year.
Any feedback on how it's been received or what?
Spoke with um Jack Hanson about a month ago. And um he, at that point, did not have any feedback, positive or adverse. Um, he said, I think people were still getting used to it, so um maybe at this point, there's more, but he didn't have much to share with us at that point.
Didn't you mention the Hulu building on Lake? On Lakeview Road that was compliant in his view?
Was that rental or was that the New Orleans? I think that was a rental.
It's a.
Weatherization.
It's a shared space for incubation of business incubation.
They had unlimited funds too.
I'm not sure, ma- ma- maybe, maybe, maybe I'm just not recording that, but anyway, I mean, we should, I mean, I I do think it's it's a good question, we should follow it back up. With with them to to see, but look, there, it it doesn't seem to have been a lot of pushback in a year. Um, and I'll 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 get into why I think that's the case, I think it's it's not hard to satisfy that requirement, honestly, with existing technology. So, um, so tho- those are, I think, just, I want to get to the to the next page, but the the two, the two big, right, things are. Buildings where because of our 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 regulatory powers, we can probably affect directly. Transportation, which we're probably gonna have to just use more soft levers, um unless we somehow lobby the state to to get more powers. Um, and then the final thing that we have control over, um, you know, as we saw, kind of at least in terms of carbon. You know, smaller impact, but at least from my perspective, I think in perspective of the committee. You know, thinking about climate change more broadly, um, and just, you know, broadening out a little bit from carbon emissions, but the whole. You know, the changes that climate change will will bring, which is, you know, uh, increasing. Um, adverse impacts on biodiversity and storms and floods and, you know, adverse lake quality because of all that.
Supreme Court justices.
Exactly, yeah, um, so the recommendation um for here, and again, I think this is where we have. Direct power is to, you know, really increase the protection of what wild areas remain in South Burlington. As as much as, as much as we can, as permitted by law, um. Then um, we had a couple of speakers come and talk about no mow May and, you know, all these, you know, cities that are kind of. Uh, incentivizing and um marketing, converting uh lawns. To to more, you know, uh, to to native areas, to forests, and that that's something we can do to help, you know, the kind of the biodiversity. And the kind of water filtration aspects impacts of climate change, um, and then we ever talked about, you know, tree canopy, right, we can. Uh, take areas that have been degraded and and, you know, re reforest and and rewild them. So that's kind of um, you know, the draft plan right now, you know, I think that. Next steps are to um do some public outreach um and get feedback. On on these actions and these targets from the community. Um, with the goal of, I think we're still planning to present to the council sometime in September, right, Paul?
Yep. And the only thing I'd add to the to that on the public outreach part is um, the public outreach for the next. Month or so, month and a half, will be specifically on feedback on the plan, but the public outreach, that's really the start. Not the finish of the public outreach, because a lot of these actions, some of them are city policy, but many, many of this is about. Community um buy-in to do all of these things, some of which may be regulatory, but many of which are gonna be choices and. And uh, you know, things like the um replacing mowed turf with native plant species, or there was some public. Feedback from somebody at one of the meetings who said, um, it would be really neat if there was a program where there was one of three or four different. Buckets that we signed up for as a as citizens, and we could say, and you get a little lawn sign that says, you know, I'm uh. I signed up for and I made my, I converted my house to being, you know, carbon neutral, I don't mow my lawn. Because, you know, things to sort of create the sense of 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 community and also, you know, something like not mowing your lawn can be. Historically considered to be something like, oh, this person's not taking care, starting to change that conversation to this person is caring for their land. In a different, in a, you know, in a twenty-first century kind of way, so it's, that's the beginning of the outreach. Um, and starting to, I think at the last meeting, the group was starting to brainstorm of, once the plan exists from the council, then it's. Everybody who has a stake in this then goes and finds the groups that they know in the community, whether it's the Rotary Club or a knitting club or the. You know, whomever and everybody in between.
There's already an embryonic movement for this, um. I believe the examples were on Brewer Parkway where one or two homeowners have converted their former, what was a lawn. Into a pollinator and and or vegetable garden, they got rid of the lawns altogether, now it's productive and. Uh, environmentally friendly.
If Keith, if Keith Epstein is listening, he will remember that the Energy Committee back in. Good God, I don't know, two thousand twelve, I don't know what year that was, um, worked with the South Burlington High School. One of the graphic design classes, um, and had students compete to create the winning campaign. That was going to be exactly what you're talking about, and it had to do with solar, it was when we were going for the, to try to be one of the solar cities.
The, right, the Georgetown Prize, I think, yeah.
That, whenever that was, it was fantastic, we had amazing students, it was very exciting and. It was an awesome way to do it, because the whole community could have been involved if we ended up actually doing them. Um, the one thing I was gonna point out or ask about here in any of the discussion, um, to me has to do with, and again, I'm. I've been so amazed with how Norway has tackled this um footprint. Average living space per person, I mean, we have very large homes here. And we have regulations, of course, that say they have to be for one, you know, family, and there are other communities in the. Country that are getting rid of that and saying, you have a right to convert your home into a two and three family within your footprint. Um, I do think that's within our purview, and I think that we should be talking about that particularly, and I was wondering if any of this came up. Is there any measurements, is there any?
One of the actions is to allow for additional, you know, units on existing sites for that exact reason, yeah.
And so, so basically enhancing the accessory dwelling.
Yes.
Converting or allowing neighborhoods to convert a single family into a duplex, you know, much like a hundred years ago happened to all the Victorian homes.
Right.
And where that likely leads, it could impact a number of these areas, but where it probably directly impacts it becomes in vehicle miles travel. Because that's a family that maybe doesn't have to drive from Georgia or at a very hyper local. Um, a neighborhood that is maybe three or four um dwelling units per acre, if it becomes eight or ten, it might be able to support a local store. Um, and then the local store is where somebody walks to to get milk instead of getting in their car to get milk in it, you know, it's all spirals and adds to it.
Did they talk, do they um have any numbers to put behind that in terms of what kind of, you know, carbon offsetting impact that can have?
Did the task force, no, that wasn't. Ickly did not model that.
Can you ask? That would be interesting for us to know, like.
So I think, yeah, the the way to look at it is to look at the model that says, how do you get to two and a half percent reduction in vehicle miles traveled every year? So that's what they modeled.
But I'm thinking about just all the stuff too, that, you know, you're gonna have like five people filling a big place with lots of stuff, whereas. Otherwise, it could be ten people with the same amount of stuff, really, because you don't need.
So you're talking about, so we only modeled primary emissions, you're talking about secondary emissions, we didn't model the emissions. From the stuff, because those emissions were generated by someone else, where the stuff was produced, but you're right.
It controls the market, you know, anyway, I I do think there's an environmental aspect to that. Um, and, you know, so, so, you know, in Oslo, you've got, and people say like, oh, Oslo is the next best thing to living in. Norway, the same way they talk about, you know, living in Chindon County is almost like living in Vermont, but in Oslo, you don't touch the mountains. Oslo is like a valley and you're just in the valley, that's where you, that's where everybody lives, they wouldn't even allow sculpture to go into the mountains, you just. You can walk there, but that's it, and so over time, like the area where my husband grew up, the backyards have all been converted into. You know, they've all been um subdivided, and it's, it's just a very different, but they're, it's beautiful, you know, they did it very nicely. Um, so anyway, I I think it's, um, I do think that would be, and it's within our purview, something we can do something about, you know. It won't be easy, it won't, I don't know what the community will think about it, but it feels like a very responsible conversation.
Look on that, just to not get too off tangent, I mean, o- one thing I've thought about is requiring smaller homes. But then allowing folks to use TDRs if they really want to have a bigger home.
Right.
You also have to conserve.
Well, that goes to the square footage, you know, that defining a unit by its square footage, which we've been bantering.
Well, well, we talked about height, but, I mean, we didn't talk about this exactly.
No, we have talked about assigning a unit to a square footage measurement maximum.
One dwelling unit equals seven, so many.
In forgetting TDRs, yeah, and that that in itself, so I just, that's why I was wondering, any um environmental information that can help us.
Well, again, we've assumed that all new homes are net zero, so while I think it makes a lot of sense. To build smaller homes for purposes of this plan that won't be an impact.
So my comment is, if we start having conversations about, for example, like other communities are, should there be R one? Um, if they, if we can, at the same time we're having that planning discussion, get some. Environmental information to back up a decision one way or another, that could help the community get behind it and say, okay, I get it now. So, so this Ickly, while we have the expertise available to us, if they had any information, that would be interesting, I would be interested in reading.
Well, again, they've recommended that new construction be at least twelve and a half dwelling units per acre. That's, that's what equally has come up with.
Oh.
Well, and again, you know, the 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 path to, there's, there's the electricate electrification of vehicles, and then there's the. Path to reducing vehicle miles traveled by two and a half percent per year, that is a. Ch- changing transportation is is a tankership, that feels like a mixed metaphor, but that's a tankership of policy. But it is all of the, it's all the things that you have been doing the last several years of encouraging development in compact areas so that people. Can can take the bus, can reasonably uh ride a bike, it's also building the bike infrastructure, it's also having bike racks at employment areas. It's also uh transportation demand management, it's eliminating parking minimums, it's possibly going to something like parking maximums. Um, a- and infill in areas so that then, as we look at a one for. One point three percent population growth, how do you achieve that in um? Both what is anticipated and also maybe seeing it, maybe, maybe it goes up a little bit from that to uh. Incentivize somebody who's currently driving from Morrisville to come and and live here in an area that is served by transit and served by these other. Um, resources.
Um, I think Monica has a really good point, because what she's talking about is infill in R one and R two. And I I brought this up before, we're obviously gonna talk about that in the comp plan and that's, that's gonna be a really sticky, sticky conversation. And we're gonna talk about neighborhoods a little bit later too, and we're talking about drastically changing the look and feel of neighborhoods. And that's, that's gonna be a really hard conversation to have with some people. And I agree that the more information we have that backs up, you know, that this is a good thing to do. No, I'm, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying, I think.
That might not be them then, but the information might be out there.
The plan and what Ickley said is but, and what the task force is focused on is, you know, building in our urban core densely and conserving as much as we can, the remaining areas.
Yeah, but I mean, we already have, it, well, this is saying, just the twelve, it's in compact development, period.
All the parts of the plan focus on building in the urban core.
But I mean, there are, it's, I think it's, it's, it would be very helpful to understand that bigger um, that bigger picture, because that may be what he's focusing on, but I think from a planning perspective, there are really interesting questions. They're like, you know, people are talking about the, the huge house that's being built part of the Spear Meadow that put the turtle over in a different location. Um, and people are like, wow, that's such a big house, but it's a two's family. And you don't know that, driving by, it just looks like a really, so it kind of looks like whatever else is around it.
To the road.
But my point is, there are ways, and those are the kind of things that we can maybe talk about. But yeah, I, I know they would be difficult conversations.
And to Duncan's point, yes, it's gonna be sticky, but some of these aren't going to be old neighborhoods, they're gonna be new neighborhoods where it won't be so sticky. If we get to the point where we can have higher rise multifamily buil- buildings or apartment buildings in the city core, we can easily and substantially exceed the twelve point five twenty units per acre by, by a large margin. So, yeah, in some places, the, the con- the context may be difficult to deal with. But in others, and that's, my hope is that we'll be able to get there with zoning changes.
Land to build on. Look at Route Seven and these car deals go on and on and on. That, that model is just ripe for change.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for a long time.
I'll just put my plug into Duncan's question and discussion of the, the stickiness. No better time than the comprehensive plan to introduce what a vision of the city twenty years from now should be. And, you know, not everything from a comprehensive plan gets done in a year one, but it sets a path. You know, the, the city center was put in, posed as a question in the nineteen eighty plan to then advance. And so as you start to think about what does the shape both of places like Shelburne Road and Williston Road, but neighborhoods like East Woods and the Orchards and Mayfair Park and um Chamberlain, starting to contemplate what does the future look like for those neighborhoods? And um, that's gonna be the source of some really good discussion and you may not have all the answers in the next year, but
There's already.
I have my hand up, I have a comment, I have a comment. Um, I just wanted to, I've had my hand up, Michael. What I wanted to say was, I'd like to remind us that there isn't a single person on this commission who lives in um a high-rise apartment on Shelburne Road or in any capacity like that. I think Michael has, lives in an awesome uh condo development, but everyone, everyone else here lives in a single-family home. And I think that we need to remind ourselves and state that every time we make comments about how great high-density living in the city center will be or can be. So let's just be mindful of that. I'm not saying we can't make it great, but none of us live there. And I think we just need to remind ourselves of that every time we discuss that.
Yeah, we don't necessarily live in those now, but I've certainly lived in um, in that kind of building.
But we don't hear. We didn't come to Vermont to do that. That's what I'm saying. That's why we came here. And this is what I'm saying, that I think it needs to be part of the conversation constantly.
Different kind of housing for different stages of life and certainly most of us have probably lived in that housing for much of our lives, so.
Okay. I'm yeah, by accident.
The committee just spent five minutes um more on um this um net zero ordinance. So if we could have flipped to the next page. It's titled Burlington's ordinance, yeah.
Getting there.
So yeah, as I mentioned last September, um Burlington um pass ordinance require all new buildings to use a renewable primary heating system, eighty-five, means eighty-five percent of the building's heating load has to come from uh renewable sources, which Burlington defined pretty broadly, electricity, wood pellets, renewable fuels. Um, applicant could uh um be granted exemption if they can demonstrate that um it wouldn't be economical to, to, to build such a system. Um, interestingly, um, they'd have to factor in a carbon price of a hundred dollars a ton of greenhouse gases emitted, um, which is, I think, you know, kind of very um forward at Burlington to, to do that. I think, I, personally, I think it's, it's right. Um, interesting and.
Wait, I'd love to learn, I'd love to better understand the math on this. Can you walk me through that more slowly?
Yeah, sure. So the way I understand it is, right, so you, 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 you do a comparison, okay? This is how much it would cost me to install uh what you want me to build. Um, if I instead, you know, put in a natural gas furnace or propane boiler or whatever, this is how much it would cost me. But in that latter um computation, it'd have to add to that the cost to society measured at a hundred dollars a ton of all the greenhouse gases that that system will emit. I think it's over twenty-five years at a discount rate. And that's the comparison that has to be done.
But do they make them pay that if they opt to go?
It's not a tax. This is.
Well, I'm wondering if they, they could, I mean, couldn't they just say?
I'll, I'll get to that too. This is not a tax. This is a, an input into a calculation.
To determine if they could just use the regular old
Fossil fuel.
Gas, fossil fuel.
Right.
So the first scenario has to be significantly hot, more expensive than the second scenario.
Okay, yes.
Even, even with the factor, the carbon ta- or not tax, but the carbon factored in.
Yeah, I mean, it's hon- honestly hard to see how anyone would establish this at a hundred dollars a ton over twenty-five years, but that, yes, it would have to be significantly more.
Oh, and then they won't, okay, so, so, and then if they don't demonstrate that, they don't get the waiver.
Right.
Okay, so then, okay. Otherwise, they have to.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So it looks like that's a pretty high bar.
High bar.
It'd be interesting to learn about their numbers, what they're seeing when people do those comparisons. And if they've had to, if they have.
I would.
If they have.
I, I think we were given an indication by Mr. Hanson that uh it's unlikely that somebody is gonna be able to
Get a waiver.
To uh show that uh it's cheaper to do a fossil fuel building and factor in a hundred dollars per ton of um carbon for twenty-five years. It's unlikely and it's, it's, and he said it's easy for, it's easy for builders um developers to comply.
There isn't a big cost impact to them? I'm, I'm wondering, is there?
Well, so, you know, I, we, well, not I, um, the task force is planning to um request that the city council adopt this ordinance and in that presentation um, we will provide a lot of detail around the technology and the costs of that technology. Um, what you know, I've learned so far in my research and put that together in the deck that Paul, I think Paul's seen, some others have seen, um, is that in cold climates like Vermont um, and folks have studied this with sister cities, there's a very small additional upfront cost to installing, say, heat pumps, hot water heat pumps above the today's fossil fuel infrastructure, but, but that's recouped actually pretty quickly. Um, in reduced energy use and the reduced price of the energy that you use to, to run those systems and, and that was even done before natural gas spiked as high as it has. So um, it's pretty clear, at least to me that um it's actually cheaper to, to do this than to have a, a fossil fuel infrastructure.
Resistant. Resistant heating of hot water is far more inefficient than heat pump hot water heaters.
Well, so we'll get there. So if we flip to the, the final page here, and I just have to caution that this is really draft. I mean, this is this hasn't been considered by the task force yet. This is kind of my page. So I'm giving you a preview of a preview. Um, but what, what I'm gonna recommend to the task force, and this is gonna, we're gonna meet on Thursday um, is that uh South Burlington adopt the Burlington ordinance in, in full, just copy it. Um, that incrementally, um, as Michael was alluding, we require um heat pump hot water heaters, which are also very efficient and, and save a lot of money. Um, and then we're gonna recommend um that the city consider adopting an inspection system. And also that the city invest a resource in um developing the expertise to help folks that have questions about these requirements.
Also, the, the, the heat pump, tech, heat pump, cold climate heat pump technology is improving every day. So much so that uh that we know of a company that's still in its test and prototyping stage will have heat pumps that can be used to replace um a furnace or a boiler that provides heat for hydronic you know, heating system, you know, water that goes through a radiator, hot water that's pumped through a radiator. Right now, heat pumps have a hard time doing that because they can't lift the temperature up sufficiently, but um, we're getting close. So it, it becomes easier to convert um old heating systems to uh heat pump based heating systems. I don't know, I, I, I happen to know that um even uh geo exchange systems are now in use. A group of families in Montreal got together and they've, because for an individual, geothermals price prohibitive, but they got together and put in a geo, geo exchange system that provides heating for a whole bunch of them. I'm not sure, five families, I think. And uh, so the technology is changing quite rapidly. And I'm optimistic that it'll make it easier for us to hit these extremely difficult targets.
So let me just say two, two additional things. And so what, what the ordinance is focused on is, is new buildings. And so I think, I from, from when I can tell for new buildings, it's, it's a no-brainer that the heat pump technology is already there. Um, and there's really no reason not to build new stuff with, you know, heat pumps and electricity. What Michael's referring to is kind of converting existing buildings that may have, you know, um, hot water heat and other things and, and that, that's, it still may be a challenge. Retrofits are you know, are harder. Um, but on that latter point and um Burlington has done something else, which folks may have heard of, which is they lobbied the state to give them a charter change, which allows them to regulate existing buildings. Um, they've not yet affected anything under that regulatory authority and has to go back to the voters. But they are figuring out, or trying to figure out how to use this authority now to force, you know, retrofits of, of existing building stock. And that, so that's something we need to also keep very close tabs on, and I suspect the task force will also be recommending that the, that South Burlington similarly ask for a charter change that allows us to have the authority to, to, to do that as well.
It, it really is a sleeping giant in potential greenhouse gas emission reductions, what Andrew just referred to. When. Sorry, Jessica, I saw somebody had their hand up a moment ago, but I, I didn't see who it was.
Just one small little point. Um, you say that the city should uh hire an inspector. And I just wondered if you might add possibly or um contract a company that does inspections. So we don't, suddenly don't have another employee at ex- exorbitant expenses.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only good task force is gonna say is to, you know, adopt an inspection system and, and the city can then figure out the most efficient way to implement that. I don't know, we're gonna get to the detail of exactly how.
It looks to me like it would, you're asking them to have an inspector as opposed, but that's what you'd like to present. That's fine. Mood point.
Was there someone online who had a question or comment? Was it?
I thought it might have been Sarah Dopp, but I'm not sure.
Oh, Sarah, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I finally put it in the chat because I figured probably this wasn't the place for uh citizen questions, but I had wondered back on the um on the screen of natural resources implications to what Andrew's been presenting, all very interesting, by the way. Um, it spoke about um uh retaining and increasing tree canopy. And I wondered if there'd been any discussion of disincentivizing or indeed punishing tree removal, at least for unhealthy um for healthy trees of, of a certain size, or was there any discussion around that aspect? I see a lot of tree cutting going on around.
The LDRs already prohibit that.
What's that?
I thought the LDRs already prohibit.
Well, but again, we don't have any accountability for that, so.
Well, the, the, the land development regulations have established full habitat blocks. That doesn't necessarily mean that a tree on a given parcel is, that's, that's a single tree is, is regulated. We have incentives for keeping them.
Cutting, I thought there was something about not taking down trees unless there's an imminent threat or unless, wasn't there something in that?
We don't have anything along those lines. We do have incentives in our regulations that if somebody's doing a commercial um project that they can get a credit for keeping um for taking actions to retain trees rather than having to um put new uh landscaping in, but we don't have a requirement.
I, I thought the ones that were approved as part of a DR, DRV and site plan, I mean, if you have trees shown on your plan, you're supposed to be keeping those trees over time.
Yes.
You're not allowed to just go in.
But that's not the same thing as say a single-family home and a tree in its yard. That's, because those are not subject to site plan under Vermont law.
No, that's what I was really referring to.
Now, I think uh, uh, one of the suggestions in, in one of our um climate action task force meetings was uh the possibility of prohibiting the cutting of trees. Doesn't matter where it is unless the tree is a, a threat, a danger or, or diseased.
Right.
It's in the, it's in the notes somewhere, but it's obviously, we haven't got down into that, into the weeds of that yet.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking. So that had, that wasn't adopted. I, 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 I remember reading that.
Any other questions or comments? Clearly a huge amount of work
Yeah.
Done already and still to do.
I think the only other thing I just wanted to add quickly that I think has been a really valuable discussion that I've seen at the climate action task force is that many of the uh strategies are complementary, but not all of them. And so, you know, the task force has talked about, it would be important to prioritize uh redevelopment and future development in areas that are in the transit overlay district, which is mirroring what you're doing. In some cases, that may mean that, you know, using our current view right now, there may be some areas that have trees that are in the core of city center. There will, there are some policy decisions that need to be uh made about how do you balance two goods against one another? And, and I think that there's been some good discussion there and, you know, that will further into you and the comprehensive plan and your future regulations about how do you balance really important shared, you know, complementary needs, but that aren't always a hundred percent aligned.
Um, I just was going to give one comment that's out of our purview, but damn, with Vermont being so cold, it would be really fantastic if there was a statewide initiative to try to find the solution regard. I mean, I just, my, we just purchased a big thing at our house and we had to go gas because we even tried to get this Arctic pump out of Canada. And it's, it's just not there yet and it's so close, but it's not. And I think it would be wonderful if Vermont as the state just took this on as our like thing, because we're the, one of, you know, one of the coldest places. Um, but I was gonna ask also, also could we um even, maybe it's, maybe we shouldn't, maybe the task force does, but if it's out of what you're doing, I would love to know the legal perspectives on what we can do in terms of um the auto zoning that we have. You know, are there, do they have to buy TDRs if they don't hit a certain miles per gallon goal that we have in our comp? Miles per gallon goal that we have in our comp plan, you know, other, what, what? How can we, and we won't need to know in the next meeting, but how can we start to learn? What we have, because it's very obvious that that is the biggest driving factor. And South Burlington holds the probably, I was trying to find out what percent of cars were purchased from South Burlington, but we probably have the highest. Percent of cars joining the road from our zoning. So it would be really interesting at some point. And maybe it's a comp plan thing to to really understand what is potentially within our purview or within the city council's purview.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, great job.
And yeah, and team.
And Michael.
I can affirm that this will not be the last time that you've heard of the subject.
Okay, so looking at the comp plan. So the twenty twenty four comp plan introduction to the knowns and a discussion of.
Yeah, so this is really an introductory conversation. I know that you've been getting a lot of introductions, but this is the next one. We spoke about this very briefly in May. As we prepare to. Write the plan over the next year, the next. The next big piece of the puzzle is from our view to establish some shared. Uh, starting points so that all the departments, all the committees, all the communications in the community. Have some shared understanding of what what are we expecting? So, you know, I can say something as. Relatively straightforward, though of course, you know, nothing's, nothing's. Perfect, that uh, the. Likelihood absent massive external changes or. Um, massive policy changes would be that we would see about a one point three percent annual population growth. Understanding that. Will help all the departments to identify, you know, what does it mean for fire services? What does it mean for, if we break that down also, what does that mean for school populations? What does it mean for others to. Prepare and plan for the next ten years, the next twenty years, so. That would be a numerical one and. In our view, what that would be provided to all of the committees to say and all the departments to say, here's what we're expecting. Please, you know, plan with that in mind. So as you're thinking about park needs, think about future. A a a population, a higher population. If you are the Natural Resources Committee and you're committed to. Natural resource conservation, how do you shape your recommendations with this fundamental understanding? So that would be one aspect of it. Another aspect would be from a policy and to say the council has adopted. And is affirming that the Climate Action Plan is a core element of it, so. Natural Resource Committee, Economic Development Committee, as you're thinking about this and thinking of shaping policies. Here are things that we are establishing as shared starting points for everything. So.
Could they be considered as sort of draft policy? In a sense.
Yes, I'm trying to, so so the the reason I use knowns were to try to have a. If there's an area where there is strong concurrence, then yes, I was trying to not sort of jump to the end. Entirely on something that might be. A debate. So, you know, we've talked in this, um, in this uh, this group a little bit about the future of. Our single family home neighborhoods. I'm not sure that I could say that's a known yet. I think that can be an objective that you're working towards, but I wouldn't say. We all know that they're going to be much more intensely built. I think that's the discussion to be had over the next. One in more years. So I think there's there's sort of the. What can we confidently give as information to folks that we are fairly certain about?
Might become policy.
Yep. Um, so what is in here is a, just a very brief data dump. It's uh, some information that we. Know going backwards, we see about a hundred and forty three dwelling units built per year each year. The majority of that in the last twenty years has been multifamily housing, sixty four percent, which is. A massive shift from the community that we used to be. So, you know, not just speaking about land use. But we used to be a community only twenty years ago. Where uh, single family homes were sixty seven percent of all of our households. It's now just over fifty percent and in ten years, it will be substantially less than fifty percent. So what does that mean in terms of? How we provide services, what are the value and importance of parks? Who who are the, who are the household characteristics? How do we think of? You know, uh, as as Monica has talked about, safe access to the various different things. We're a very different community. Than we were even twenty years ago and we will be very different going forward. And you think of the policies that you put in place in the last few years about. City center about.
Parking lots.
Parking lots, but TDRs, um, in the most recent one, being allowed to go to allow for greater intensity. All all really good policies that match exactly what Andrew and Michael were just speaking about, and they're having a substantial implication. One that jumped off the page to me that I thought was really interesting was that if we talk about. Approval, so I'm not talking about new homes constructed because a lot of South Village was approved seventeen years ago. New actual approval since twenty ten. Eighty five to ninety percent of it has been either in the transit overlay district or like. You know, a couple hundred yards from it, which is, you know, an interesting. Implication of the policy that you have put forward and also a, you know, reflection of. There's not that much land, frankly, that would be. That would be new neighborhoods outside of those areas. So it's just seeing the future shape of our communities. It doesn't mean that there won't be. Still housing that has been approved previously and that there wouldn't be some in the future, but.
No, it it it's an indication that the policy to focus. But to direct development to the transit overlay district has been somewhat successful.
The other.
Maybe by default, but.
Well, I mean, yeah. The, I'll just go through one more. There's a much better graphic of this that we'll be talking about in the in the the near future, but on the transportation side, this is something that Melanie Needle. Talked about at the very beginning of the Climate Action Plan. It's sort of eye popping to see that. Of South Burlington's population, twenty six hundred people live and work in South Burlington. Seventeen thousand people live somewhere else and work in South Burlington. And eight thousand people live in South Burlington and work somewhere else. Most of those somewhere ouses are central Chittenden County, Burlington, Williston, Essex, Winewski. And and Essex Junction. There are, of course, some people committing much further, but if we look at the at the data. A big bulk of who comes in and and leaves the city every day is within. You know, five, ten mile radius. And so when we think about transportation, A. Our boundaries are only our political jurisdictional boundaries. They're not really the way that people use our communities every day. And B, you know, things like the Bike Ped Bridge or all of the actions of being a member of Green Mountain Transit or thinking about. EVs and e-bikes and all these options, most of the daily trips that people are taking are just a handful of miles. But it's not just in our borders. And so thinking about it. In that respect, I think is is going to be a really valuable for everyone.
Did you say you know the of the seven? That the seventeen thousand that are working here. Um, did they also come from within Chittenden County?
Yes, we have a pretty good, uh, we have pretty good data on it. It's not, it's not perfect, perfect. With the census also collects information that we will have updated. Coming up pretty shortly about where people say that they work the week that they get the census report. But yeah, the bulk is pretty nearby. There are certainly a lot of people who commute from. St Albans and further, but it's not the, it's not the majority.
That's actually quite good to know because if they're within a ten mile radius, that should. What's the word, accelerate the adoption of EVs because there's no range issue.
And most of, most of. Park and rides and all the other things that can.
Yeah. Paul, I had, if I may, two questions. Uh, one on the list of overall policy items, the four items I would. Like to see that the plan should incorporate key. Climate Action Task Force recommendations, or at the very least, the recommended high impact actions.
Wait, where are you, Michael?
Just back overall policy.
So as a known.
As a, yeah. And well, as an additional. As an additional bullet, if you like. And then I had a question about the. Hundred and forty three. Dwelling units added annually since nineteen eighty. That's where I wanted to come, but of course, should we should try? Do we know or can we find out how many dwelling units were added in each of the last five years? Because it might be a lot different to a hundred and forty three. Because that's a long, you know, since nineteen eighty is a long average.
Essentially report on the more recent trend also.
Yeah. Five years or three years. Those are the only two questions I had, yeah.
It's really a compliment. When I saw this, um, seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty nine people. It it pretty startling statistic and I'm wondering how. You know, it's like eighty percent of our population is. Visiting the the town, working and then going home. So we're not going to have really a lot of control over, you know, their driving habits. Versus South Burlington people, you know, residents might be, we might be able to have more control, but so. Be curious.
Interesting challenge, right? It's sort of, there are residents, but only from eight to five.
Yeah, yeah. I I mean, it it just shows that it's really a Chittenden County issue, you know, we're one little speck, but. But it's just, just an aside and comment that.
Yeah, well, and and to me, it speaks to especially on the transportation side. The reasons and and of of thinking about connections to adjacent places that. To recall, to recall that, you know, if we're thinking about bike paths. It's, which is a a small piece of the puzzle, but important one, the connection over the. Muddy Brook into Williston is just as important as the connection within South Burlington, you know, even though it's on the edge for us. Um, that's not the user base necessarily.
And our our population might be the same way, like within my household, you know, both of us work outside of the city, but. You know, my husband bikes to Burlington every day or walks, like he never drives his car to work. But, you know, he falls into that kind of last bullet of working outside the city, so. But, um, I'm sorry.
You know, I I just thinking about what you just mentioned, Ted. I mean, to me, that. I I think every time I drive by one of those GMT buses and see it absolutely empty. I think it's what a wasted resource, you know, if there were some way that that could be. Made more functional, especially if we had that many people coming from that close a distance. Yeah, I I was like myself, I live off Spear Street. If I could get on a bus. And get to Dorset Street without having to go to downtown Burlington and get on two buses, I'd do it nervously.
And um, Montpelier and surrounding areas are currently in a pilot, I think they're calling it micro mobility project. Which is sort of a, think of transit as an on demand thing, sort of like. Uber, but not paid, not a private, not not paid private service. And it's. Think thinking about that exact problem. Um, Michael, I don't want to spend a ton, a ton of time, but this, we do track it annually. So this is our.
So I can look that up and.
Uh, I can send it to you. I don't post it online at the moment.
But I can calculate the average of them.
Yep, so the dotted line here is about the hundred and forty three ish, and you'll see that, you know, not, not surprisingly with economic cycles, there's ups and downs. Twenty twenty one is a very high year. Uh, over close to two hundred and fifty homes, but the prior two years were under a hundred each, so. Dwelling units, yes, yep. And then I I have a version of this where it's single family, two family, multi family. And starting in twenty twenty one, as part of the collaboration with, sorry, twenty twenty two, start with a collaboration with the schools. We're also tracking the number of bedrooms that each new home has to start to have a better sense of. Not just the form of the housing, but what are the, um. You know, is are the studios, are the one bedrooms, are the three bedrooms? That will help to inform who our future population is going to be, so. And also, you know, policy that we can shape.
So back to the employment and transportation, while we can't. You know, dictate what the people are driving, coming in or whatever, we can look at where, what their destination requirements are. I mean, why can't we require that businesses or mall parking lots. Must have X number of charging stations. And if anyone happened to be listening to, what is it called now, Vermont Public? On their radio, they may have heard me pitch my idea, which the host thought was good. But but it's not, I'm kind of kidding, but the idea is, and maybe South Burlington can start this. That there, this, it's like a new way to let. The problem with the EV charging stations is that, you know, somebody can just go in for the day and leave their car there and be selfish. When they maybe only need two hours or twenty minutes to charge, and there are ways that apps can be created to let, you know, some. You know, type of person go in and change the charging around for people like. Like a valet service. So anyway, maybe the city can sponsor something like that. And maybe like every hotel should offer it if they're, if they're here, they, that should be part of the regulation that they have to provide that. Service and then, so we can focus on what can we do about the destination and put requirements there. So EV valet.
Yep, um, I think the population of South Burlington is twelve point five percent of Chittenden County. Is that correct? About.
That sounds about right, yeah.
I think we have twenty percent of the workforce. So we are magnet for work. And also, um. The city grew by, I think, twenty percent from two thousand to two thousand and ten. I remember it grew three from fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand. So that was a twenty percent growth. And at that time, we were, you know, the by far the fastest growing city in in Vermont. And it's down a little bit, but I said, I think we're still the fastest growing city, aren't we?
Worse, uh, at least by total population, we're in the very, we're we're near the top. There's a few very small towns that, you know, you add ten people.
Right.
They, you know, you meet the headlines of fastest growing community, you've gained eight people, but.
Well, we account for a lot of the population growth in the in the state of Vermont.
We do.
Right.
Yeah.
And we traditionally have always been a gold town. We're, we're one of the wealthy towns too. Like Woodstock or or Stowe or.
One of the things that the Climate Action Task Force did at the beginning was they they looked over the statewide plan and. Also look to see how is South Burlington different from the statewide plan? Not necessarily better or worse, but different. And I think, you know, Andrew talked tonight about the possibility of an ordinance that would. Require new housing be net zero. In a lot of Vermont towns, that would not necessarily be a lot of the housing stock, frankly. Whereas in South Burlington, that is a, new housing is a. Um, an area of of significant policy. You know, in a lot of other towns, the issue is the homes are eighty five years old and they leak like a sieve and you see two new homes a year. So it's a completely different set of problems.
Well, if that became an ordinance, if something was already in the planning stage and past like the DRB's level of, you know, stamp of approval, would it then still have to meet that or do they get?
They got a permit. It would be, I mean, the way it's phrased is to get a permit. So if they they received a permit, then it would apply.
Yeah, I think, um, yes, to both of those. Uh, we would need to. Uh, that that would go into the details and looking to see where our authority is if. If a neighborhood was approved ten years ago, but the home is just getting built now, where does that fall in? And it's a great question and something that's very high on my list of if the council says. And it's a great question and something that's very high on my list of if the council says we want to be looking into this, then. That becomes pretty key in the question.
What's new, define what's new, when we say new construction.
Right.
Yeah, but it's the master plan, I think they would still be beholden to rules.
Uh, it depends on, so ordinances and regulations are different areas of of law. So that the city's land development regulations are one thing, but a city ordinance is a different area of law, so it's. An important area that I don't have a good answer to tonight.
I wanted to mention to Andrew too, this is a time, if you want a charter change, now is the time for a charter change, because. The council has called the Charter Committee into existence for probably the next year. And the Charter Committee is considering things other than the composition of the city council, I mean. Some things like rewriting the. You know, the charter to reflect gender or neutral language, for example, you know, so. If there's things that you want to see in the charter.
I think Task Force is going to be talking about what we want to ask the council before the presentation of the plan. Personally, I think it's maybe. Too much to chew. To ask for two big interim things, my own personal view would be to. Tackle the charter change in September, we'll present the whole plan, but that, yeah, that's something that has to be considered.
Just that it is now. In action, the Charter Committee, and it's been ten years since it met last.
It takes a community vote to make anything happen, so.
Yeah, it's a long process.
On it.
And it goes to the legislature.
Doing the.
It's a long process, I know.
Possible.
Yeah.
Even if it's just a preview, that there's some things that could go in the charter, could be.
I, 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 I would plan to mention it, but not make it the focus of the next presentation, but subject to what the whole task force wants to do, really.
I think what I heard at the task force was it's very. Easy to conflate subject areas. And so. An ordinance that talks about new buildings, a charter change that talks about existing, even amongst the group that has been talking about it. There was a fair amount of, wait, which one are we talking about now, so I think, you know, your point of being very clear of an ask. To a group that is, has a hundred things on their mind in every meeting.
I, I think so, and look, given how the. Timeline around the charter change, it's not something you can do immediately in any event, you know. Waiting to present that in September is, I don't think is gonna. You know, be very adverse to us, I guess.
Isn't they asked to just copy Burlington, copy paste Burlington here, really?
Yep. Well, I mean, we have to be a little thoughtful about like, we're going to recommend the hot water heat pumps in addition, so it's, it's close, but not exactly that.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the neighborhood discussion.
Can I just mention, I'm sorry, just mention one thing, you know, I realize that Paul, I sent to you the, you sent to me the full Excel spreadsheet with all the. Actions.
I don't think I sent that around to everyone, but I'm happy to share.
People want to see.
Draft, but yes.
For instance, have the EV requirement that Monica is mentioning, so people might want to.
There's a lot in that spreadsheet, a lot more detail than we had here tonight, I have one question that we should, whether. Staying with the comp plan. Whether we. Should consider. The impact of climate change on population growth here, you know, one point three percent. Per annum. Is historically what it's been, but shouldn't we think about what it might, might be because we're gonna. There'll be parts of the country which will become. Less appealing for people to live and parts of the country which will be more appealing like here, so.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that, Michael, and I think that, I'm not sure that I'd put it under the category of a known, but I think as the plan contemplates what. What are, what are variables that we should be contemplating is what happens if. The pressure becomes double that or triple that, and how do we, you know, how would we respond to that?
Yep.
Or, you know, hopefully not the opposite of, you know, a number of Rust Belt cities and what they struggle with, but.
Hey, still on the topic of comp plan, but discussing some of the neighborhoods. This was something that came up in our discussion at our last meeting, it seems like it maybe piggybacked on that conversation.
So this is really just sort of a opportunity for you to begin to think about. That I heard, we heard at the last meeting that there was interest in. Focusing on, on making sure that, you know, we're aware of the neighborhoods and how important they are to the city, how they might change connectivity between them and just sort of. You know, what does that mean to you, how would you want to weave it in, I did a little exercise for fun. Of trying to map the neighborhoods in South Burlington, this could be obviously crowdsourced to people. Uh, I was very broad in my brush of, you know, grouping. All the neighborhoods along Kennedy Drive into one, just calling it Kennedy Drive, and I came to forty-five doing that. I came to easily sixty if I were to sort of break it out, so it's an interesting, from a planning perspective, you think of. You know, Country Club Estates behind the airport, where Jessica lives in Valley Ridge is really sort of its own area. Eastwoods, where Paul lives, has its own identity, that is right next to Farrell Street that is building its own identity. It's a, it's a fascinating challenge, because, you know, we, we can't really be branding ourselves with sixty neighborhoods, and yet that's what people feel we have.
Except that we do have a responsibility to respond to Chamberlain. And if we respond to Chamberlain, you know, we might think about responding to other neighborhoods.
Right.
And there are some conventionally understood neighborhoods like Chamberlain, for example, Eastwoods, or. You know, the orchards or Mayfair Park or, you know, there's some fairly established neighborhoods.
And wouldn't we have been able to reduce the number by, so not to eliminate any of the ones that Paul has just mentioned, but. For the rest. Focused centered on developments like. You know, South Village is a neighborhood, but it also includes the houses on Preserve Road and South Point.
Oh, I don't have an answer to it, I really don't, I mean, how do you?
Maybe a way to kind of concentrate it a little bit. And then for where I live, there are three, there's Ridgewood, Indian Creek and Hetherfield, it's really one neighborhood.
Andrew, do you think you live in a neighborhood? It seems like you do.
Um, yeah, I don't know, but I have a question, I guess I'm just. Trying to, what's the, what's your goal of focusing on the neighborhoods, like what? You focus on sixty neighborhoods, it feels to me, it. Tends to divide people more than bring people together.
What I can say is that, please go ahead.
What's the purpose, like what's, what do you hope to accomplish? Other than being descriptive, I guess, describing our diversity, what do you, what do you hope to accomplish by focusing on neighborhoods?
I, my personal feeling is, having grown up here, the. Protect really that the characteristic that makes that particular neighborhood unique. And when we talk about infill, it does worry me a little bit. Because there are certain neighborhoods, I mean, if we, every single house in the neighborhood. No longer really has a backyard. As I saw in Burlington, when we lived there. People from Burlington moved out to South Burlington because they wanted some more land, so I just think there's a lot of social. You know, issues involved, and Monica mentioned that we all live in a single-family home. True, all the city councillors live in a single-family home. Most of the people who serve on boards live in single-family homes, the reason, and that's a socio question, but. Many people in apartments and so on. Very low voting participation, it's the single, single-family owner, owner, excuse me, who seem to have. A stake in the game and an interest in the community, now it'd be nice to change that, but that's the reality. So, you know, it suddenly throws the fur and back of people's necks of suddenly a basher, elitist and so on, but that's the reality that's happening right now. And the neighborhoods, the ideal thing for Chamberlain. Would be to tear every house down and put four-story buildings in there, that'd be the best density. You know, but would you really want to do that, it's a charming place to live for, for families. And so, I mean, that's, that's the thing, I go back and forth, I know we need more housing. But we have, I just think we have to really tread carefully of, do we want to have every neighborhood look exactly the same? And just masses of people, or do we want some semblance of uniqueness that's there, and what that uniqueness is, is. The eye of the beholder, but, you know.
Well, I think that's what Paul Angles is driving at each community is, each neighborhood has its own character and personality.
Yeah, that's one thing that, I think, I think also, though. People, I think it's a way to bring people together, because I think people in their individual neighborhoods. Feel fairly isolated from city government and from the city. And fairly alienated from, from it, you know, I mean, people know what's going on, you know. You know, everybody thinks that voters are uninformed, I don't think they're uninformed at all, but they're certainly not listened to at all.
The, the problem, Paul, is that it requires some, some leadership in a neighborhood. To pull people together, to get them to focus on their common interests, and I see it. I see it where I live, if, if people didn't act and actively seek out their neighbors. There wouldn't be any neighborhood feeling that.
Yeah, that's your community, your community isn't so.
So, yeah, it's, it doesn't happen by itself.
Yeah.
One of the things.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead Ted.
Well, real quickly, again, we're living in Burlington, Bernie. Started a program through the Cito Office, Neighborhood Planning. Neighborhood planning, I should know what it is, but.
The assemblies?
Yeah, something like that, and. Got him to the Senator at the time, Daniels and I were chair of the university sort of neighborhood. And these were really good, these neighborhood planning meetings were really interesting. Procol, you know, it was, it's, it would present to the council, city council issues at hand, but it definitely got. The neighborhoods more engaged than they are now, what Paul is sort of suggesting, but. Maybe something that the city council might think about is neighborhood planning committees.
One thing the Charter Committee is doing, I mean, the primary thing is to diversify and expand the city council. So that the city council is representative of the entire city, which would mean having wards and having people elected from wards, which would be fairly local by elections.
Right. The other thing is that a lot of these communities or neighborhoods are in homeowners associations, and that's where. The focus might be. And but. I, you know, that's, that's maybe where their attention is directed rather than. To the community as a whole, the neighborhood as a whole, I know, well, where Donna lives, they've got three or four homeowners associations, just in the village of Dorset Park.
We'll go Duncan and then Donna.
Yeah, I mean, Andrew, to answer your question, I mean, having grown up here and lived in three different neighborhoods in South Burlington, and for me, that's really what the fabric of this. City is about, I mean, the residential fabric of the city is the neighborhoods, and yeah, it can be somewhat parochial, but I, I think that. If you got people together and, you know, everybody talked, you'd be like, yeah, we, we want a lot of the same things. But I think the neighborhoods are such a big, you know, part of the city. That we don't need to call every single one of them out, but I think we need to acknowledge what. Big part of the fabric of the city that they are, and also, I think if we want to get people involved in the comp plan. The way to do it is at the neighborhood level, I think that's, that's where the rubber is going to meet the road, if we want to get people out and get their feedback. But it's really, in my view, having grown up here, it's the fabric of the city, yeah.
Donna, do you want to go?
Yes, I, in addition to in the comprehensive plan. I can't help but think that in the climate task force work, that because. So many of these communities were built around the same time. They have similar construction, often it was the same builder. The income levels are going to be a little closer to the, you know, similar income levels. They're going to have so many similarities that I can't help but think that these, these neighborhoods are going to become very, very important. Organizations in, in terms of addressing some of the climate issues, and one that really comes to mind is Stonehedge. I mean, you know, Stonehedge and a lot of the older condo communities are pretty, they're not well-built. They originally had electric heat. Some of them still have electric heat baseboard. They desperately need, you know, retrofitting. And they have a singular overriding governance in terms of their condo associations. And so I think that it's going to be super important when we think about weatherization work. To focus on particularly the older neighborhoods, and that's, you know, it's another way to focus on income level. Not that there's a lot of consistency there, but there's going to be more consistency. You know, I mean, people at Stonehedge are not low-income, but they're also not high-income. You know, some of them, there are a lot of retirees live there, many of them probably qualify for weatherization assistance. And so I think that, you know, I agree that it's. In terms of the comprehensive plan, it's important, but I think particularly. For building-related and transportation-related. Climate Task Force issues, it's going to be. Having, having representatives of, of different communities, I think is going to be critical. To, you know, to finding out, you know. How do we transfer this information effectively to those communities, and by the way, Village of Dorset Park actually has one overriding. Homeowners association. In, in each of the condo, you know, because they're single-family homes and condos, the condos have. Group, they, they have their own separate. Financial associations, but we do have one overall association.
Just, I, I agree with a lot of what's been said this evening, I think the, the one thing that I would add that jumped off the page to me looking at this is. As a community of neighborhoods, and we think about, you know, whether we're talking about citywide votes and, or just a sense of community or support for city center and things like that, that. That's a, a challenge, but also an opportunity to think about the neighborhoods. And also I look at the page, and I looked at, you know, look at a map like this, and I think which neighborhoods are well-served? Which ones are well-connected and which ones are less well-connected and less well-served, so, you know, I'm looking over on the left, left-hand side of the page here, Old Orchard Park. Five or six buildings each with forty homes in them. You know, they're geographically pretty close, but there's not a lot of services other than, you know, commercial services near them, and that's. Several hundred South Burlington residents, and how do we?
By Lowe's?
Yeah, in sort of in behind Lowe's, yeah, and that's just an example of one, you could say the same thing of. The, whoops, I think I just moved things around on the page, the. Clinton Street and Milham Court, you know, little, little pocket of twenty or thirty single-family homes, sort of. Separated from everything else, are they well enough connected so that they can. Walk to Milk or, you know, get out of their driveways, and, and how do we think about that? Even though that's only twenty or thirty homes in the scale of ten thousand, that's hard to think of at the plan level, except maybe, you know, to. My answer to your question, Andrew, would be acknowledging. The neighborhoods and then saying on a broad level, what does it mean to try to, is it a goal to try to sew them together either? By transportation or by sense of community, or is that not a goal, and I think it wouldn't be to try to write a plan for each of these neighborhoods, some of them. Like Chamberlain are large neighborhoods that have seen dramatic change and probably do deserve a lot of attention, and other ones. Maybe are captured under a broader. Set of goals of connections. As. So, yeah, I'm happy to share this around, this was a very quick and dirty thing, I think it would be a neat exercise, speaking of high school students, to see if we could. Get somebody to start a campaign to crowdsource identifying the geography of your own neighborhoods, that's, that's how Front Porch Form originally started, was people self-identified. And I think this was, gosh, fifteen years ago. And I think this was, gosh, fifteen years ago that Front Porch Form started. We used to have nineteen different forms in the city, and it was their choice to consolidate them from a management perspective, but it's it'd be interesting to see what people say. You know, maybe people say that they live in a super small neighborhood, or maybe people say, oh, I just live in the Lakeshore area of the city or the Southeast quadrant, and they don't identify as necessarily, or maybe it's both. I'm in Butler Farms and I'm in the Southeast quadrant. It would be interesting.
And some of them are connected with paths and roads in in the case that I mentioned, which is Ridgewood, Indian Creek and Heatherfield. They're all connected with walking paths.
Right.
So.
And and more recent ones like the Rye neighborhood north of Oak Creek Village. It's connected by bike path and there's a park in it now. So hopefully it is making, it is encouraging people to want to go between neighborhoods.
And there is a lot of exchange. People walk in in these other two developments, they they walk in Ridgewood and from the golf course too, because we happen to have two big fields, but it's it's a sort of a community space. They walk their dogs and they talk.
That's what we get. We get dog walkers from the condos, you know, in the apartments.
Paul, earlier I was thinking about our official map. You know how we'll have a planned road? Kind of ties into this conversation. I was thinking, wouldn't it be wonderful to have planned local markets, you know, plan like if there's a policy that says every home should be able to ideally, the plan would want to see every home should be able to walk within X distance to get to a local market. Now, we can't control who owns the market. There's I understand there's complications.
Control the zoning to enable something like that to exist. I
and to.
I would be very supportive of that being an objective in the plan.
Make it part of like the official maps land use, you know, like how we have the planned roads. So we we can kind of within some kind of reason, but that might help us identify, wow, this area is really lacking a walking distance too. And, you know, I'm I'm waiting for Wheelock Barn to turn into.
Well, we did something like that a few years ago with the.
Waiting for Bob to turn into what?
Market ice cream, you know?
We did something like that a few years ago with the open space strategy where we did an analysis of distance. Who's more than a quarter mile from a park? Which then answers the question from a park perspective, you could answer the same question of who's more than a quarter mile from a market and then identify here are the, you know, I don't want to call it food deserts because we're not, you know, other parts of the country where it's truly inaccessible, but where are we not within walking distance of something like that and set a goal to to rectify that? That's, you know, I think that goes exactly to the vehicle miles traveled challenge and sense of community and the idea of.
Yes.
But it's also access to to transit. For example, if there was public transit from Veterans Memorial Park up to the city center, I wouldn't use my car. I'd take the bus because it's only what, maybe five, six hundred yards for me, seven hundred yards to walk to the corner of Dorset and Swift. I'm getting a bus.
Then the challenge becomes frequency and is it's is the is the, you know, to Duncan's point, is the, are there enough ridership to make it worthwhile, which is challenging?
Yeah. Get on the bus right in front of my house, too. No, I can't.
What's that?
Scroll down. I'd love it.
Sure. This was a very quick and dirty exercise.
Oh, is this, these are the neighborhoods?
Yes, it's just quick, quick circles.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did this in fifteen minutes. So this was not, you know, don't think of this as as a.
My house is not in the neighborhood.
It seems to me like we have those meetings that it's mostly your neighbors that come, you know?
Neighborhood of four.
Yeah, whereas like mine feels like a tiny separate little neighborhood, but also identifies as part of Chamberlain because that's the school.
Right. And then you get funny areas like Vale Drive and Four Sisters where they are appear to be a neighborhood, but everything splits. The school district split there, the the water and wastewater system split there. It's because they're they're connected, but they're technically, they were originally different neighborhoods. And so, you know, it would be interesting to know, do people feel like that's one neighborhood? Or do they feel that even though they're right next to one another, that, you know, they're going left and they're going right? It's.
Wonder about Pinnacle Drive, how the neighbors in Pinnacle Drive.
Yeah. And is that a neighborhood? I don't know.
I don't know either.
All right.
Be interesting to find this stuff out, though, because that's who everybody is.
We're ready to go into minutes?
Yep.
Okay, we have minutes from June fourteen.
Motion to approve?
Quick question.
Guess not.
Before.
There is a motion, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
Your way. And on the TDR on what's mentioned in there, LDR twenty-two oh five and twenty-two oh six. I'm not sure whether we've actually seen a sort of single consolidated document of that on the new TDR ordinance or chapter. And I just wanted.
Yeah, I couldn't. I wasn't here, so I was trying to find what the decision was.
Obviously.
I don't know.
I can see that before we do the next step, even though we voted.
Sure, we have posted the we've posted it online, and what I tried to do was I grouped all of the changes that are about TDRs into one place and then all of the ones that are the others into a different place. So, you know, you might have a change to the definitions in Article Two and then the chapter in Article nineteen, but I put them all together in in order of the regulations, but just for TDRs.
So.
So everything, you know, paid whatever it is, X number of pages, they're all together just about TDRs.
Okay, but it's going to be chapter nineteen ultimately.
Yes, but then there are changes to all the others as a result. The definitions are in Article Two.
We see chapter nineteen as a.
Yep, that that was that was in your packet last time, and it is posted as just nineteen, but then you're deleting things from nines because nine is where that used to live, so that has to be shown as as changes. But yes, the singular thing is in nineteen.
Then I second the motion by Duncan.
The other discussion in the minutes? Okay, on favor?
Bye.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Motion passes. And then any other business?
Move to the chair.
Paul, would it be under the proposed amendments? On the planning and zoning page, where would I find the?
I believe, did I not create a link right from the front page?
Of planning and zoning?
Yes, I thought I did.
Well, I just don't want to go clicking on things.
First thing on planning and zoning page.
That one, okay.
Yep, proposed amendments.
Thank you.
So it should be all right there.
Okay, and we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good luck, Paul. Just, you know, being solo.
Just, yeah, just to see what, you know, what's worked, what hasn't worked.
You're all solo.
I think.
We're all expanding our skill set.
Yeah.
Because have they, so everyone has to have been in compliance for over a year now, right?
Yeah.
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 I'm surprised they didn't have more feedback. Yeah.